Clear for the record of this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes that this Planning Commission meeting of November 19th, 2020 will be conducted pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N 2920. The meeting will be held via teleconference, and Planning Commission members will participate via teleconference. Those locations are not listed in the agenda and are not accessible to the public. The public is encouraged to listen to the Planning Commission meeting live on Woodland TV Channel 20, and also by going to the City of Woodland website at www.Cityofwoodland.org/meetings. If you'd like to make a comment during the general public comment or on a specific agenda item, there are three ways to do that. First, members of the public are invited to leave a voicemail message at 530-661-5900. All voicemail messages received by 6:30 today will be played during the Planning Commission meeting as part of the record at the appropriate time. Once again, that number is 530-661-5900. Second, any member of the public watching the livestream who wishes to make a comment on an item because it's being heard, they submit an email to the following email address prior to public comment on an item. That email address is planningcommissionmeetings, no spaces, again, planningcommissionmeetings@cityofwoodland.org. If you email, please include the agenda item on the subject line. Third, you can participate via Zoom. You will find a link to the Zoom webinar meeting in the Planning Commission agenda that is posted online at the City of Woodland website. Click on the link to join the webinar. The webinar ID is listed on the webpage as well. The webinar ID is 921-7009-5836. Or you may access Zoom via phone by dialing area code 669-900-6833, and then putting in the web ID, which again, that number is 921-7009-5836. Please note, all comments are limited to no more than three minutes. This includes voicemail messages and email comments submitted to be read into the record. The emails should be read for no more than three minutes, and this means for any longer emails, we may not be able to read the full content within three minutes. If you've submitted both a voicemail message and an email, we will only take one. Okay, roll call. In this situation, because we are on Zoom, I'll ask each commission member to respond verbally. So as we go through, let me grab my pen here so I can mark everybody off, and we'll do it alphabetically. Commissioner Harris, can you hear me well? And are you, are you here? Need to unmute Steve?
You're muted, Steve.
Nope, you're still muted.
There we go. And I can hear you.
Good. Thank you, Steve. Commissioner Holt. Okay, I don't believe we have Commissioner Holt, so at this point, Chris Holt reflected as absent. And let me ask, Erica, did we receive a notification from Chris ahead of time? I believe that we did, that he wouldn't be available.
Yes, that's correct. He let us know ahead of time.
Okay, so at this time, we'll provide a approved absent for Commissioner Holt for this meeting. Hey, Commissioner Hurst?
Present.
Good evening, Valerie. Vice Chair Lizaraga?
I'm here, sir.
Excellent. Commissioner Lopez?
I'm here.
Excellent. And yes, Commissioner Wells is here. I'd like to request that each member of the commission respond to the following questions. And so I'm going to ask each one of you whether you can hear me well. Commissioner Harris? No, I mean unmute?
Chairman, I can hear you.
Excellent. Commissioner Holt's unavailable. Commissioner Hurst?
Yes, I can.
Excellent, thank you. Vice Chair Lizaraga?
Sure what? Of course I can hear you.
Excellent. Commissioner Lopez?
Yep, loud and clear.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you all those numbers of you. Do all members of the commission have a copy of the agenda, or have they reviewed the agenda prior to this meeting? Commissioner Harris?
I have.
Excellent. Commissioner Hurst?
I have.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lizaraga?
Yes, sir, I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Nope. I just have the one that's in front of us.
Yep, it's right in front of there we go. And, and then, yes, I have. Commission Secretary, Erica, have you posted an agenda at the location that's reasonably accessible to the public?
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you. The record should reflect, and we have five commission members that are present for this teleconference, and have indicated that they are able to hear the proceedings. At this time, I am requesting that other city officials introduce themselves and their positions, that we can record their attendance in the minutes.
All right, I guess I'll start. Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. Ken Hyatt, City Manager, present.
Thank you. Erica?
Good evening, Chair, members of commission. Erica Baumgartner, Business Development Liaison with the City of Woodland.
Excellent. And I'd also like to acknowledge Jay Kamura, who is with our Information Technology Division, and who makes all this stuff work and seem smooth and everything. So Jay, thank you very much, and he'll be assisting us in managing the Zoom meeting and the public comments portion of the meeting. Now, as we go through the agenda, I'd like to request that before speaking, you clearly identify yourself each time. For example, this is Commissioner Harris, so on. Please let the individual speak and do not interrupt. I would like to ask also that, to the greatest extent possible, everybody mute their phones or devices when not actively speaking, so we don't get unnecessary background noise. I'd also like to advise all commission members and the commission secretary that any votes taken during this teleconference portion of this meeting must be taken by verbal roll call. And with that, if everybody would mute their microphone except for Vice Chair Lizaraga, he will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Marco?
I'm mute here, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marco, thank you. Okay, so at this point, I'd like to ask the chairperson, the staff secretary, to take the formal attendance. Erica?
Yes, thank you. We've heard from all commissioners, except Commissioner Holt is absent, excused absence, and we have a quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris, do we have any subcommittee information for the cannabis subcommittee?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Erica, do we have any communications from the public that I'm not otherwise aware of?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. And then Erica, I don't believe that we have any minutes for that, this agenda, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this point, again, this is not an item, this is information for tonight, which is the Woodland Research and Technology Park draft-specific plan. We do not have a formal public hearing for this meeting, but as, at the end of this, we will, at the end of this presentation, we'll come back first to the commissioners, ask if they have any questions or comments, and then we will open it up for any members of the public that are on a Zoom meeting, that are participating, that would like to add comments. So at this point, I, let's turn it over to, is, Ken, are you starting this, or is Erica?
Yeah, I'll say a few introductory remarks, and then Erica will walk through the bulk of the presentation.
And, and pardon me, everybody, I gotta go turn my dryer off, it keeps beeping at me, so I'm gonna mute this, and I will be right back when it starts, and I'll, I'll be able to hear you. Thank you.
Great. Okay, well, good evening. It is our pleasure to introduce to the Planning Commission the Woodland Research and Technology Park Specific Plan. This document, as you know, has been in the making for a few years now, and actually was a byproduct of our recently adopted general plan, which the commission was intimately involved with, with crafting. And as you recall, through that general plan update process, a couple key themes sort of thread throughout the process, and really were key to the, the document throughout, and economic development and housing diversification were two of those key themes for which this project specifically was identified as a, a key opportunity for the community to achieve those goals and the vision for the community. During the general plan update process, you know, the community was going through painful transition after the, you know, deep recession of the 2008, 9, 10 timeframe, and the council in going through the process really sort of encouraged staff and the community to think about economic development in Woodland in a different way, and really rethink some of the foundational principles and objectives of our, our general plan policies around economic development. And, and from that conversation with the community and, and analysis, you know, we identified the need to really diversify the job base within Woodlands. You know, we were overly invested in many respects in service sector industries. Clearly agriculture was, was a foundation, but certain components of, of the food and agriculture industry and the community were under-leveraged, particularly given the proximity to UC Davis, which is a world-leading research institute that is uniquely aligned with our food and ag strengths on the private side. It's also got a world-renowned animal science program, and Woodlands being just seven miles to the north, right, uniquely positioned to, to leverage the presence of that, that research powerhouse there, and as well as the talent that was graduating out of that university on an annual basis. UC Davis is the only top 25 university within our country that does not have a research park within 10 miles of it. And while Davis, the community has attempted to try to capture some of that, you know, no meaningful efforts have really manifest themselves to, to really take advantage of that. The university has proactively established Aggie Square as a key economic driver in research and private industry collaboration, centered largely around human health over there near the Med Center. They recognized, right, that is fairly focused effort of theirs, and have, in our conversations with them, been very supportive of how Woodlands and our private industry here can be a landing spot for research and innovation that wants to collaborate with their professors and post-docs and research institutes on campus, and then vice versa, come off of campus and partner with private industry here. So this location of the project was unique in terms of being that opportunity, in that it's the southerlymost location in our community, closest to the university, right up 113, so access for researchers and faculty and staff and students that want to interrelate between the two would be very convenient. We're seeing more and more faculty, staff, and even students migrating to our community. So the opportunity for that synergy to continue to grow was unique. After the, the end of the general plan update process, we were successful in encouraging the five property owners of the project area to come together and partner to bring the specific plan forward, and we've been working with that, that ownership group over the last three to four years now, to develop this vision for the plan that really takes the program, the development program in the general plan, and the policies and visions in the general plan, and brings them into greater focus and specificity. And I will now have Erica walk you through what that looks like in the context of a specific plan. I will remind the commission and the community that, you know, tonight is not a time to necessarily render judgment or opinion on, on whether the document is perfect and the plan is perfect, right? We're here to, to introduce in a draft form what it was proposing to develop ultimately, and then over the course of the next six to eight months, we hope to go through a robust community dialogue and input process to get feedback on the plan, refine it, and then come back to the Planning Commission and council ultimately for consideration for adoption. So tonight, we see is really sort of marking the start of that public outreach process, and we look forward to working with the commission and the community to refine the document as we go forward and develop a plan ultimately that puts the community in, in the best path forward, and ultimately achieving the vision of the general plan. So with that, I will have Erica walk you through the details of the plan and look forward to discussion tonight.
Thank you, Ken. Erica?
Hey, yeah, thank you for the great introduction, Ken. Thank you and good evening, Chairman Wells, members of commission. Again, we are very excited to be able to share with you the public review draft of the Research and Technology Park Specific Plan this evening. Give me one moment to make sure my slides are gonna move here. There we go. All right. So I'll take you through a high-level overview of the draft document, some of the key elements of the plan, and then conclude with next steps in community and stakeholder outreach over the coming months. As a very brief reminder, a specific plan is essentially a tool for carrying out the goals and policies identified in this city's general plan, and is, in many ways, is similar to a general plan, providing a vision and regulatory framework that will guide the build-out of the tech park over the coming 10, 15 years life of the planned area. As you will recall, the plan is comprised of six individual parcels of land encompassing 350 acres immediately adjacent to just west of Spring Lake. It's bound by Harry Lorenzo Avenue and Highway 113 on the east and west, and Farmer Central Road on the north, and down just past County Road 25A to the south to the city's urban limit line. As Ken noted, the tech park will implement the goals and policies of the city's 2035 general plan adopted in 2017 for new growth area SP 1A, now known as the Research and Technology Park. SP 1A, and the general plan is defined as a mixed residential district anchored by a research and technology business park, providing a prime opportunity for job creation and diversification within Woodland. So to that end, you will find in the early chapters of the draft-specific plan, the project's guiding principles and policies that are derived directly from the general plan that shape the overall development framework for the project. And I want to highlight a few of those key objectives this evening, and at the same time, walk you through the plan itself, so you can start to see how those guiding principles tangibly come into play. So to start, obviously, a key component of the project includes the development of a state-of-the-art innovation center. The project development standards allow for flexible building formats that allow companies, companies to change or to respond to changes in market demand, and allows for phased development and growth over time. This flexibility, as well as a streamlined entitlement review process, is key for attracting new companies, especially those that are looking to build from the ground up. Additionally, the plan supports a diverse, high-quality housing with an emphasis on ensuring a thoughtful transition between the planned area and the adjacent Spring Lake neighborhood. So in this specific plan, the 350-acre area is described as being comprised of three core districts. First, as shown here in the purple, is the Technology Park District, which is located along the western or Highway 113 boundary of the planned area, and will accommodate about 2.2 million square feet of business park and commercial uses through an integrated and well-connected campus environment. The residential or village district is located along, along the eastern boundary immediately adjacent to Spring Lake. The village district will accommodate 1,600 residential units of a variety of types and densities, but with the transition to lower densities as you approach the eastern boundary to, again, allow for that seamless transition to the Spring Lake community. Through higher-density development in certain locations, and the flexibility for smaller lot subdivisions, similar to Beagle or Parkside Development, which I've recently been to the Planning Commission, the plan will realize affordable housing by design, we hope, in, in many aspects, and it will also be consistent with the city's adopted affordable housing, inclusionary housing policies and ordinance. And then you have the Village Center, which is really the heart of the planned area, centrally located between the Technology Park and the Village Center Residential District. It includes a mixed-use town center, a mobility hub, which I'll highlight in just a minute, an 11-acre linear park, and captures some residential uses envisioned as being a little more urban in nature, and reflect, as reflected in the guidelines and standards for the area. One of the guiding principles describes the Village Center as providing the central gathering place for employees, visitors, and residents, and importantly, for the innovation component of the project, is an opportunity for that informal networking as well. So collectively, all three of the districts work together to create that unique community that will attract, you know, high-quality jobs and companies drawn by the location, as well as development flexibility, and will attract and retain a high-quality workforce, including Woodland residents and young adults coming back from college, as Ken mentioned, looking to work, live, and play in a cohesive and well-connected neighborhood. So to that end, the planned area is built on the concept of a prioritized pedestrian connectivity, rather than on auto dominance, and facilitation of an active and healthy lifestyle, or active, active and healthy community, sorry. The map on your screen shows the active transportation network, which consists of multi-use trails and paths, dedicated on-street bike lanes, as well as shared lane markings on lower-volume local roads. As described in chapter four of the plan, which is the mobility chapter, the project area at build-out will incorporate nearly five miles of Class 1 trails, which are the 10-foot-wide off-street trails, off-street green belts and multi-use trails, and an additional three-and-a-half acre miles of Class 2 on-street bike lanes, encouraging that active transportation, walking, biking, scootering to work and home, et cetera, rather than dependence on auto trips. As I noted earlier, a unique feature of the planned area is the specific plan's mobility hub or transit hub. It's centrally located and planned for within the Village Center. The mobility hub will serve as the core of the alternative transportation system, providing integrated transit service, as well as that last-mile connectivity, or connectivity choices through things like Rideshare, your Uber Lyft pullouts, as well as scooter-share services. The location of the mobility hub in the Village Center was intentional with the idea that the amenities at the Village Center, including cafes, co-working spaces, will enhance the hub as a place of connection and encourage that alternative transportation use, that's more than kind of your typical bus stop location. So lastly, before I move off this broader objective of healthy, active communities, I want to mention the Village Center, and in particular, the 11-acre linear park, which we called the Yard, where many of these multi-use trails and bike paths actually connect into and throughout. The park will include an array of passive and active recreational uses, and a key feature at the park will be a really cool open-air pavilion, where you can have farmers' markets, neighborhood gatherings. And the park really is a key amenity in the planned, planned area, and a social gathering place that will serve not only the tech park community, but also the entire southeast area, including Spring Lake. A follow-on document to the specific plan is actually the master park development plan, which will help design the park, the features in the park, as well as the farmer's market pavilion. So then, the last component of the plan I want to highlight before moving on to next steps in outreach is the objective of sustainable project design. So certainly, some of the foundational elements of the plan, including the live-work mixed-use nature of the planned area, the bike head-trail system, the alternative transportation network, you know, all points us in the right direction of having that sustainable planned area and community. However, there are additional measures incorporated and standards incorporated into the plan to ensure individual development projects incorporate sustainable design features to the extent feasible. Those requirements are outlined in chapter three of the plan, and include project consistency with the city's climate action plan, incorporation measures of above-building code Title 21 standards, and demonstrated consistency with the Cal Green Tier 1 standards, which are generally considered to be about 15% more energy-efficient than your Title 24 standards. And lastly, the project will develop a transportation demand management plan to reduce vehicle trips by at least 10%, consistent with that general plan policy as well. So at a high level, we've covered many key elements that you'll find in the first four chapters of the specific plan. Chapters five, six, and seven describe the project infrastructure, the implementation and financing strategies, and the technical administration of the plan. Given just time constraints tonight and the higher-level focus of this presentation, I won't do a deep dive into those chapters this evening. Certainly, if you have any questions, we can address those. So to quickly wrap up with next steps in outreach, as noted in your staff report, following the release of the draft-specific plan, we will see a few additional supporting documents to follow that will inform the entitlement process, the first of those being the draft environmental impact report, which we anticipate will be released in December, and will commence the SEQA 45-day public review period. That's just the SEQA public review period. The broader community outreach will be a bit longer than that. And then a fiscal impact analysis, financing plan and development agreement will be presented in late winter, early spring, we anticipate, maybe a little bit sooner. And the financing plan will help us identify the timing and financial correlation between the jobs and housing development, and ultimately, how that relationship is managed and balanced throughout the planned build-out, and that will ultimately also be addressed in the project development agreement. Oh, skipped ahead, almost done. So over the, the coming months, the project applicant team and city staff will meet with the community, local stakeholder groups, to reintroduce the project and review the content makeup of the specific plan. A detailed outline of that review process is provided in your report packet. We expect to be back before the Planning Commission in the January, February timeframe to provide a more detailed overview of the plan, as well as the draft environmental impact report. That will be a noticed public hearing, will let, you know, everybody know when that will take place. That's a great opportunity for feedback and dialogue, once everybody has really had a chance to digest the plan and, and be ready with comments. So information regarding the availability of the specific plan and related documents, as well as public meetings, governing board hearings will be provided to the public via email listserv, social media outlets, as well as publication in the Daily Democrat, and notices when appropriate. And at any time throughout the process, we are taking comments and questions via email at researchpark@cityofwoodland.org, where folks can contact me directly. So that wraps up my presentation. I would like to introduce John Hodgson and Melanie Matthews, both part of the project applicant team. I believe Mr. Hodgson would like to speak on behalf of the project team as concluding comments, but maybe I'll turn it back over to Chairman Wells to take that to the next step.
Erica, thank you very much. And at this time, I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank both planning staff, Ken and Erica, for their involvement in bringing the subcommittee up to date with this. We really appreciate it. I think you guys have really put a wonderful project, you know, what we have so far, and as we get more additional community comment, but this is very exciting, cutting-edge, and it's nice to see this type of project come to the City of Woodland. So with that, what I'd like to do is to go down through our list of commissioners and ask my fellow commissioners if they have any questions for staff. So at this point, I'd like to ask Commissioner Harris, any questions at this point for staff on the side?
No, at this stage of the game, I'm satisfied. Everything looks nice, and as we dig into it, we'll have our discussions.
Excellent, thank you, Steve. Commissioner Hurst, any questions or comments at this point that you'd like for staff?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great, okay. I do have a question for John. I am interested because there might- I am interested because there might be multiple developers on this project. And I'm interested, the process of how you go through marketing and contacting those developers, especially ones that are going to be amenable to this kind of innovative, you know, eco-conscious, community-building development structure.
John, go ahead and respond to her comment if you'd like.
Yes, thank you. John Hodgson, the Hodgson Company, based out here in Sacramento. I've been in the real estate law and now real estate development business for the last 30, 35 years and done a number of these large plans. And I said this before, I think this is the best specific plan, master plan I've been involved in in my career. And I'm very proud of it and very pleased. Specifically to Commissioner Hurst's question, yes, I would say I'm the point person representing the owners. The owners own 350 acres. We have a plan. We have reached out to a few select commercial and residential developers who we think might be good partners. I mean, to your question with respect to, well, would they, would they be interested in this? Well, if they're, if they can't follow the rules and they can't implement the vision, the answer's simple. Even if I wanted to sell it, well, the owners wanted to sell it, you know, the city wouldn't approve it, nor would we want to do that. So, I mean, I was going to say in my remarks, and I'll just maybe go through a couple of them right now, is that in the development business, particularly when you have an unentitled piece of property like this that's been in the works for a long time, I guess I like to say it, and I've said this many times, you need a "there, there." We have a plan right now. It's a beautiful plan. It's well-thought-out. We'll go through the public process, the vetting process. But until we actually have an approved plan, you know, people are just saying, okay, you know, what's going to happen? Without going into much, if you notice, Davis had a comparable plan. You know, they were ready to start, you know, processing through the city once they got approval from the voters. And they didn't get approval from the voters. So eight or nine years of effort in that group, in that organization. So they don't have a "there, there." We don't have a "there, there, here," but I'm very optimistic that we will because of the support that we've received from the city, the community, from the staff. And, you know, we will continue to listen to the concerns and try to address them. I can tell you that I'm very confident that we'll have very qualified developers. Once we get this approved and it's appropriate, we'll start announcing who will be doing it. Right now, I don't see one master developer for all 350 acres. Most probably, we'll have one or more that might be working on the office part because that's just sort of a specialty. You'll have somebody else dealing with the retail. You've got several types of residential, you know, single-family traditional, single-family higher-density, and multifamily. Each of those is sort of a separate sector. I'm probably getting a little beyond your question, but short answers, they're out there. They will implement this plan. And we'll see what happens.
Wonderful. Thank you, John. Okay, Valerie, any additional questions with staff?
Yeah, I, this might be a John question. This might be someone else. But I did notice that in the highway-adjacent area, currently, there is an allowance for at least one gas station and one potential drive-through application somewhere in there. And from what I understand, these are included out of a necessity of sorts because they can provide needed infrastructure in the area, connecting infrastructure. And I'm just wondering, you know, we're building out this really big, beautiful thing, and it's kind of a gateway area. I would say, I know the gateway is kind of more over towards Harry Lorenzo towards in the main area. But could you give us some insight into really, how much impact does a gas station or a drive-through really impact the financials of this project in building out the infrastructure? And is there an alternative that we could actually attract instead of those two, two things?
And I'm going to pass that question to Erica. If you could give us a short answer on that, Erica, I'd appreciate it.
I'm muted. Okay, here we go. Yeah, I, well, I think John might be a good person to address this too. I would say that, you know, that those certainly aren't the most glamorous uses, but they are sort of necessary still, unfortunately. You know, we still do have, you know, vehicle trips, and it is still a primary interchange location. We did think about the location of those facilities in quite a bit of detail. I would say at one point, you know, we were looking at where something like that might be appropriate, knowing that people do still rely on those facilities. As Valerie said, you know, we, at one point, they were considered, you know, north of 25A in the primary kind of gateway of the tech park area. We thought, you know, no, that's probably not the best location. That's really not the gateway that we want for the community. But closer to the freeway, where you might also have a hotel use, not at the prime gateway to the Technology Park is essentially why they were located in the highway commercial zone and also limited to not more than one of each of those facilities in that location. So that's probably the long and short of my answer. If Ken wants to add anything, or if John can speak to, you know, what financially this might do to the, for the plan.
Well, my comment would be more, this is a mixed-use community. It's office, office park, it's residential, it's retail. The idea here is to have people, as much as possible, live, work, play in the area. And among other things, people are going to, you know, need a car in many cases. We hope to minimize that, but the reality is people use cars. We're going to need at least one hotel, perhaps a couple. Nobody's going to come in and build a 160-unit, a 60-room hotel right away. They may do some kind of a highway commercial, a type hotel, a more highway hotel. In terms of the financing, I mean, I don't know that. I'm not quite sure. I don't know if I understand the question in terms of, you know, it, there's... For us to start this project, in my opinion, the most probable first thing that happens is, in the first phase, we see some kind of office buildings, probably somewhere on... Well, I don't know. If you can point to the, Erica, on, can you do on this map? Show the Village Center, and then go up and you can see the Central Park. To the left, on the east, the west side, probably coming, yeah, somewhere along there is most probably where the first office is going to be. Because, and most probably, we would also try to see, depending, everything depends on the market. We would also see potentially some supporting residential, whether it's apartments or a higher-density, single-family, which is what I think will go first. It would be nice to have some highway commercial, partly because it's a service. We've actually had several major gas companies or gas company representatives approach us. I think simplistically, we've said, if and when we put something there, it's going to be the nicest gas station in the western United States. They understand that. They've seen the plan. Although they haven't seen this plan because it's only come out, been out about a week. So the key to getting this thing going is, you know, getting the first, those couple buildings up. And to do that, you've got to bring an infrastructure from ways away, sewer water, drainage, roads, et cetera. All that costs money, and one building won't support it. So there's got to be a combination of residential, commercial. And again, you know, I, whatever goes there, we'll have to vet through the public process. You know, we'll have to get through Ken Hyatt, and you know how much of a, what a nice guy he is. But the point is, is this, you know, you all will look at it. We'll want to bring something that's beautiful. But that's not, in my opinion, the first thing that we're going to be doing. The first thing we're going to be doing is getting the office going. Because that's, this is a research park. This is not a residential with supporting, you know, office park. 2.2 million square feet of office is a lot, folks. That's eight Wells Fargo buildings in downtown Sacramento, which is the, which is the largest, you know, high-rise. I mean, so this is a lot. I mean, my, my hope is we could build a couple 40, 50,000-square-foot buildings. We have interest in, we have some interest, which I can talk about at some time. So again, I'm kind of wandering for sure.
And John, thank you. And Erica, or Valerie, thank you. So this is, you know, the point of our meeting tonight is very much a high-level review of this. And so without getting too much into the weeds because we've got a lot of additional bites at this apple as we go through the process over the next five or six months. So with that...
Any other questions for now? Thank you so much, John.
You're welcome. Thank you. Vice Chair Liz Raga, any questions for staff?
Of course not. You know, I have a comment, but I'll make them later.
Okay.
Okay, so don't worry.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez? Okay, Fred, Fred may be out for a little bit. And I have no questions for staff. They've, they've done a very good job of spending time with both Steve and I on this plan to begin with, and we appreciate that time. And I'll start the comments and just, John, welcome you and Melanie. We love your involvement with the City of Woodland on this project. We're very excited about it. I think that Ken's, Ken's work on this and the staff's work, Erica's work on this, has brought us leaps and bounds from where we would have been three or four years ago and seeing this integrate with the general plan and with new technology and new transportation stuff is really good. So those are my comments. I'll just run down my fellow commissioners for their comments. So let me start with Commissioner Harris. Steve, any final comments?
No, I, again, I think that, I mean, I have things, and over time, we will get into those. But an overview of it is a project that, if done, you know, the way presented, could be, you know, quite a feather in the hat. I'm a huge proponent of having careers in our town too, not just jobs, but our young people can become educated wherever and come back to their community and have some careers staring them in the face would be a wonderful thing. I've had this talk with Ken and Erica. I'm a strong believer that if we're going to build homes, we need careers and jobs, and then the homes will follow. Get the jobs. People need a place to live. You build the homes. We wouldn't want to see this project driven by housing only. We need the jobs and careers to accompany that. And if not, then we end up with a bedroom district, which is not beneficial to our city, in my humble opinion. But with my talks with the city and such, I, I feel really good that they understand that quite well. And they agree that, and John mentioned it in his comments, how important the tech part of it is. So overall view, at this stage of the game, I think it can be a very big plus for our community.
Wonderful. Thank you, Steve. Valerie, any, any comments at the end here?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's super cool. There's been a lot of work put into it, and I, I really like the direction that this is heading. I mean, I, I hope that it, that it becomes a "there, there," you know?
That's what we should name it, the "There, There."
"There, There" specific plan. I am interested, however, within the age of COVID, like you said, it actually brought up a thought that I had about the amount of office space that we are putting into this location. Do, would I have thought that that is bad before COVID? No. Do I think that it's something to consider? Or I would like to know your thoughts in the future on how COVID would impact office space in a location like this, especially since a lot of people are working from home? Are we building in work-at-home options into the housing portion of this? You know, home offices, that sort of thing. So that's, that's one thing that I would comment on. The other is that, you know, not to focus in on this gas station, but there are a lot of resources in the Raleigh Gateway area that directly has a gas station right there. There's another gas station just around the corner, down Matmore. So, you know, including something like that in this specific location, what a beauty, you know, I would feel would be maybe, you know, like you said, it should look great, but I think it might be a use, more useful piece of land for something else other than a gas station right there. But we can get into that in the future. And thank you for the presentation, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you, Valerie. Vice Chair Liz Raga, you are muted. Here we go.
Yeah, if, what, well, you know, let me tell you one thing. I've always realized, since I came to this town, that the proximity of Woodland to a world-renowned university such as Davis offers opportunities that we needed to take advantage of. And I think that's one of the things that I'm going to have to credit. You know, Ken, he's been at the front of this project. And we need to be able to take advantage. Now, one of the things that is occurring, and of course, you know, Ms. Hurst is kind of, you know, talking about that in a way. COVID is not permanent, okay? However, there are going to be transformational experiences we're suffering that are going to become a little bit, well, with some permanency. It calls for adaptability, and that's fine. I don't think that this project is going to necessarily not respond to what is occurring because that's part of what it's doing. I think that the fact that we have that university so close to us, the fact that it's such an incredible research center, you know, in medicine, in agriculture, in veterinary science, it's huge. It's huge. And we should, this park, it's really something that I totally support because it is adaptable, you know? And I'm certainly not going to worry about a gas station now. But the whole concept and the project is something that needs to be done because we need to take advantage of the opportunities offered by the fact that we are so close to the University of Davis.
Marco, thank you. Fred, welcome back. Any final comments?
No, I mean, we've been talking about this park for a while. I, I think we had discussed it with some of the city staff like about five years ago, as far as, you know, what kind of support we could get. I, I think with a proximity to Davis, with everything that is evolving now, part of this pandemic and part of just the evolution of business and the, you know, the micro-incubators for small businesses to get started, it's a tremendous opportunity for the City of Woodland and for the County of Yolo to develop that park. And, you know, like, John, you're a lead person for the property owners. You know, there'll be people coming to you. You're not going to have to go advertise anybody else. Word will get around and people will come to you to try to get in on what they can, what they can find. Because when you have a lot of businesses of that type congregating in one area, you just get development. It just, you know, it fosters development. It fosters innovation. And those things are, you know, what this town really needs, you know? So that's, that's my take on it.
Fred, thank you. And then also, I'd remind everybody, we have a close proximity to the Woodland Community College and what a tremendous resource this project would have and impact it would have on our local community college with, with, you know, programs and connections. So it's not only about Davis, but it's for the students of the City of Woodland as well. So it's not only about Davis, but it's for the students of the City of Woodland as well. So with that, I'd like to thank everybody who's participated tonight, and I'd like to take this opportunity just to check in with Jay. Jay, have we received any emails? Or is anybody else that you see online that would like to make any comments?
One person did send an email in, and that is Paul Kramer, who'd like to make some public comments.
Okay.
Paul is actually connected twice to the attendee side. I'm just going to allow one of them to talk, and we'll take this one.
Paul, welcome. You have three minutes, once we get you on board. Paul, here it is. There we go.
Paul, you are on mute. I'm actually going to allow you the other, the only one of you to talk, and we'll take this one.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Get back to my notes here. Thanks for the opportunity to comment. Until I received notice of your agenda, I was not aware of the state of this project. Staff did not respond to an email inquiry, but now it appears to be given a fast track, and I have two concerns about the proposed schedule and process. First, 45 days to review and comment on the draft DIR, especially over the holidays, is pretty tight. While that may be the minimum required by CEQA, more time is appropriate here, I believe. Second, I note that your planning commission will not be reviewing the development agreement. It will go directly to the city council. The specific plan and standards are all fine to have, but development agreements are where the rubber meets the road. It's where the applicant is guaranteed a state of the standards, and hopefully, you obtain some concessions in addition to those that you could normally require under your police powers in exchange. You certainly should have a voice in the review of the development agreement, both the original master development agreement and any subsequent sub-agreements. I also hope that any development agreements that you approve won't be as long-lived as I've been told some of those related to Spring Lake have been. I come late to the Spring Lake process, but I am especially concerned about some of the ways bicycles have been accommodated over there. And I will be giving a special attention to that aspect and probably many others when I review the specific plan. So I'm sure we'll be talking again. I thank you for your time.
Paul, thank you very much. Those are great inputs. And we will circle back around and have discussions with city staff in regards to those items that you brought forward. Okay, Jay, anyone else that we have that could possibly like to comment?
Not at this time. If there is anybody else that would like to speak on the Zoom controls, you can raise your hand. It does not look like there's anybody else.
Okay, we'll see in that. And with our comments and presentation completed tonight, I'd like to ask Vice Chair Liz Raga if he would entertain making a motion to adjourn?
I still move, sir. Absolutely.
You have a motion to adjourn? So let me...
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Lopez. And now I'm going to go through and verbally confirm with everybody. Commissioner Harris, is that a "aye"?
Muted. It's done.
Commissioner Hurst?
Aye.
Okay. Vice Chair Liz Raga, you made the motion.
I support my motion. I support my motion.
And I support the motion. The motion passes unanimous. We are now adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for being part of this. Staff, thanks for a great presentation. You guys have a wonderful night. John and Melanie, thank you for being with us, and thank you for doing your part for this. We appreciate it.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. We don't see each other before that.
That's right. That's right. Stay home. Don't go anywhere, anyplace else.
Thank you, everybody.
Everybody, come over, man. Free food. Just bring a mask with a little hole so you can put a straw in it.